So on tonight's agenda, call to order Pledge of Allegiance, Great Meadow Brook Farm, consideration and action on motion to reconsider vote to deny approval of horse race track location at Great Meadow Brook Farm. Further, if reconsideration is successful, consideration and vote on whether to approve location of Commonwealth Equestrian and Agricultural Center LLC's proposed horse racing operation at Great Meadow Brook Farm pursuant to General Law Chapter 128a, Section 13a, and adjournment. Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, a few housekeeping rules. And a word of thanks to Megan from Meany's. We have coffee and wagon wheel cookies courtesy of Meany's. So thank you to Megan for doing that on relatively short notice. As said in the selectmen's meeting on Monday night, the board has decided not to entertain public comment here tonight. The board has decided in our meeting on Monday to allow one person from the petition group, the petitioner, to speak. And the purpose of this meeting is for the board to make the decision on whether we want to reconsider our vote. And if that motion is made and carries, whether we want to rescind our and reconsider or change our mind on this. Monday, things got a little exciting in the selectmen's meeting. You will see several officers here in the room. We ask that people be respectful. If you are not respectful, I'm going to ask that you be removed. That might seem a little harsh, but people deserve respect. Everyone in this room deserves some respect regardless of whatever, what position you're in, what side you're on. And if that doesn't happen, I will have you removed and you will not be able to come back in. So I'm just setting the ground rules. I think it's only fair. There have been a few times, honestly, when sitting up here was a little frightening for the three of us sitting up here. So, you know, we've heard several times that people on either side are afraid to speak, and that's what we want to avoid. Everyone should have a voice. Everyone's opinion should be respected. If that happens, the officers in the room are directed to remove those that can't participate respectfully. So I'm just putting that out there so everyone is on notice. I don't think it's going to happen, but I'm setting the expectation for everyone. So the purpose of this meeting, as said, is for the board to make the decision on whether we want to reconsider the vote that was taken on October 27th. And as I see it, I'll just say sort of what's on my mind, and the other board members can say what's on their mind in a minute. Actually, I think I'd like the petitioner, whoever's going to speak, for the petitioner to come up and to take the time to speak about the petition we have in front of us. I do have the original petition sitting here. So, and it is, it is a public document. But there was some concern about the petition being taken back by the petitioner. We have the original one here. So that shouldn't be a concern for everyone. So Devin, are you going to speak on behalf of the petition group? We ask that you use the mic.
Please, for the board. Hello. I want to start off by saying thank you very much for giving us the time to present it. It means a lot that we're given this opportunity, considering how much time guys have already put into it. I understand that it's a long time, and I truly appreciate it, along with the rest of the group that submitted this. A couple things to clear up before I begin to get into the petition, because as you know, the rumor mill goes around like wildfire. And there are some clarifications that clearly need to be said. I am a third-generation family from this town, and I'm currently an employee at Eagle Hill School. My time lived in this town is much longer than my time employed at Eagle Hill. Eagle Hill did not drive this petition. A group of citizens in this town drove this petition because we want a chance for everybody to be heard. A large group of us agreed with you on the Monday night previous to making your decision that a yes vote to put this to eventually get it to town vote would be what's fair to the town, would give everybody a chance to be heard, and it would be what's fair. A group of us last Monday started to rally together and went around collecting 420 signatures in five days, 340 of which are registered citizens, although that does not matter since it is a non-binding petition. But we gathered a lot of thoughts from people across town, people from Gilbertville, people from Wheelwright, people from Westburg Lake, North Hardwick, everywhere across the board. Many people support the project. Many people thought that a lot of people in this town are very nasty and were intimidated to even speak. Many people are still on the fence, but still agree that it should ultimately be us who choose what happens, since this could have a very large impact on town. Some people are still against it and still agree that it should be us to vote to choose what happens for everyone, because it does impact Wheelwright, it impacts Gilbertville, and it impacts everybody in this community. And ultimately, the only people that we've heard speak so far are a certain small group, and they've been extremely intimidated by too many people, and it caused as many people not to even show up. We also heard a small population that still choose to remain silent, but choose to support the project if it did go to town vote due to various reasons like small businesses in town and such things across the board. We really want the choice in our hands. We really hope that it allows us to give everybody in the community a voice, because that's what every citizen in Harbick deserves. We've been stuck in the same place for years and years and years, and we're just slowly degraded. First, it was the ambulance, then it was the police station left, the fire department needs serious upgrades, and then the town hall gets flooded, and we'll see where that goes from here. But we've watched this town go down in no movement forward, and there's a lot of people that are sick of that. There's a lot of people that are ready to make a move for our future children, for everybody in this town, from seniors to current parents now, to the young people coming up. They deserve a better school. They deserve the proper teaching in that school. They deserve, everybody in this town deserves medical services that are responded to in a timely fashion. And we can't get any of that right now if we don't make a choice to accept some type of business into our town and move forward. And we really just hope that it allows us to make that choice. We really want that choice. At one point, I was not sure that this was possible, but when everything came together, there's 420 signatures, all Harbick residents. And I thought that I had that as well.
Thank you, Devin. So I guess some of my thoughts and then my fellow board members can speak. We do have panelists here to answer questions. So, honesty was nice to me, I'm sure for you all too, whether, however you feel about this. So these are the options I see that we have as a board. We can do nothing. We can acknowledge receipt of petition with 420 signatures on residence that was submitted, and we can choose to stand behind or do a thorough. Second option is we can decide to reconsider our vote. And if the board, and it doesn't need to be unanimous, it just needs to be the majority of the board votes yes, it starts again, the process starts again. And so Alex can speak a little bit about that in a minute. Third option is the board can call an election without changing our vote tonight. We can call it an election. It's a non-binding, it's a referendum. The results of that is certainly its election cost for the town. So we'll have the regular process, special election, the town clerk will have to get the ballots printed, and we'll make some more work for the town clerk. That's the third option. So we can, again to summarize, not vote and decide that we as a board want this to go to a non-binding referendum vote. Fourth option is we can also not vote, but maybe continue on in the process. So it's very clear, most of you are aware, maybe have read already, the draft host community agreement. Board has not made any progress on that, but we've, hopefully all three of us have read it, but we've not done anything in moving forward. For those of you who remember, and maybe we want to forget about this, but the landfill and how that all went, we had the option to vote on that. But the selectmen at the time were very bright in that they established a landfill committee. Several of us were on that committee, and what that committee did was look at all the options and look at various documents. And so an option in my mind is perhaps we don't change our vote tonight, but we start the process without spending a whole lot of money, because this is, that certainly would be on the town at this point. Get a group of folks together, and that would be appointed by the board of selectmen, and look at this, look at the proposal. I've heard several times from several of you that you feel it's too fast, so that could be potentially a viable option. I had another one, but it's gone. Oh, well, that's part of the, if we were to vote yes, if we were to vote, there's two votes that need to happen. One is to reconsider, and two is to vote on the proposal again. If we, the majority of the board votes yes on the proposal, then it would start the process again whereby 12% of the population could get a petition together, submit it to the board, ask them us to reconsider. If we don't reconsider our vote and it continues, it stays yes, then it can go to a binding special election. Am I correct? Did I hit all of that? So those are the options that I see we have as a board. So realistically, I think there are four options. Kelly, Rob, do you have questions about this? Do you want to say anything? Okay. So she said she didn't have anything that I've covered.
I would say my personal opinion at this point is that the townspeople would want to vote on this, on this issue. So I'm more in favor of doing something to expedite this and get it out there for the people. My question to the applicant is, are you willing to pay the cost for the town if we were to move forward on an election, the cost for the whole election, the legal cost the town's going to incur? Because, all right, John said yes. So the applicant is willing to pay for this process. I don't know how the other board members feel on moving on that aspect, but I just feel instead of sending people out to get either changing a vote or getting more petitions and all this, we're going to end back at the same spot. So maybe we should just move towards that.
Excellent. Talking about binding.
I don't think we're able to do that unless, so, so I don't want to speak for you, but I think maybe Rob is saying that we would do the non-binding referendum to get it out there. That's the only mechanism we have at this point unless we, unless we vote to reconsider and then re-vote again, and we, the majority votes yes, and then the process can start. So I guess the question, maybe, whatever way this goes, if the board chooses to do, call for a special election where they, I'm not using probably the correct terms, the town clerk, and Alex can correct me, but if we choose to bring this to a vote and have it be a non-binding, and I think the purpose of that maybe, you know, it's difficult for us board members to weed through the noise. There is a lot of noise here. We're hearing, you know, people sign the petition, they didn't realize that they didn't understand what they were signing. We're hearing that, a bunch of different things, and we don't know, and it's hard to weed through the noise. And perhaps an option is that if people have the option in a private setting to vote the way they feel, that would give the board some direction on how the town really, the majority of the townspeople feel. So that might be the reason for doing the non-binding. But there is a cost.
So I have, unfortunately, this appeal is not a non-binding. I have to consult with him. A non-binding election, we don't have the ability to buy licenses for that. And that may or may not change the decision whether or not to proceed under our purchase agreement, which expires on February 24th. We have purchased property without no community shares, without any section. I'm not sure that that's going to change that. Binding elections are different.
So, so I can, I can recap. So what John has said is that Mr. Field's mother-in-law passed away, and that's why he's not here, so please send our condolences. That if there were a non-binding referendum, they have a certain amount of time that they can go in front of the gaming commission, and they have the option until February to purchase the property. And depending on where this goes, they'd be purchasing the property without gaming commission approval because they couldn't go back until 2024. So, and that is in regard to the cost of the election and whether they'd be willing to carry the cost of the election.
Cost of election is an issue. For record, my name is John Staphne, here representing the applicant. The cost of the election is not an issue. We've paid a non-refundable $5,000 in community pay for fees, and if there are other fees, we're happy to pay legal fees or engineering fees or anything else. The cost is a non-issue. The question is, if it's a binding vote, then we're in queue to continue through a process. If it's a non-binding vote, you have a non-binding vote, and then you have to go through the binding vote again next year. And instead of being in queue for 2023, we're now in queue for 2024. And so I don't know whether this group is prepared to stay and purchase the property for another year without the community having any, without there being any defined process. You're not inviting us to come back, you're not setting a process, you're just saying, we don't know. That's not really giving us any direction to figure out what we want to do. And we have not pressured the community, we've not said anything, but we do need some guidance that says, come and show us more, do more, spend more, or not. That's all, we're just looking for a signal.
I guess when you stated that you want a signal, I mean, you've got 420 people to sign your petition.
You didn't have any?
Correct, correct, but that's, the voters of the town are the majority of, or voters of this community. Now, I also know there's a large amount on the other side of this issue. We can vote here tonight and say yes, and then we can go through this whole process and end up at the end of this with people turning this down anyhow. So I guess my question to you is, I mean, how much direction can we give you besides we're willing to move forward with this by putting this out there for an election?
So the process?
Yeah. I understand, but you're staying on the process here.
So the process, I've said to you, is the board has a role in that process. A non-binding referendum is, doesn't tell us anything because it's likely to go back to a binding referendum at some point after that. And we are going forward and purchasing a piece of property without three people who are the community leaders telling us, proceed, don't proceed. We're happy to pay for a binding election, we're happy to pay for whatever the community's costs are. At the end of the day, that gives us an answer sometime early next year as to whether or not the community wants us to proceed or doesn't want us to proceed, and we can purchase the property. The purchase and sales agreement is a public document. It's almost $4 million for us to purchase this property. We're purchasing it under the good faith that we have a pathway to go forward. A non-binding referendum means nothing. It's a nice statement of the community, 421 signatures, it's amazing, that by the way, we had nothing to do with, nothing. That's a very strong statement. I mean, I would suggest, I would ask, put it forward to a binding referendum. We're happy, we're not going to stand in the way of a referendum. Make the referendum count for something. If the referendum doesn't count, we haven't made any progress whatsoever. And you've asked voters to take an opinion, and then you've got to go through the 138 process all over again next year, and you're going to spend an entire year having a debate about whether or not to proceed. That's a lot to ask of a business. We're just asking, can we proceed? Can we go to the planning board? Can we come back to the selectmen with plans? Can we do engineering and designs, drawings? Can we start breeding horses? A non-binding election doesn't let us do any of that and asks us, go spend $4 million. And I can tell you from talking to the people who own the property today, 10 acres, they're unlikely to give us an extension. So if we don't purchase the property by the end of February, then you'll see some other application or something else. We're flexible, we want to be helpful, but we need some process. And the committee you described, I looked in and I read about your landfill committee. It seems like a very thorough process to go through and get community buyout. I don't know why you wouldn't proceed with something that ends up in a dialogue with us. We've given you a document that's our first attempt to tell you our legal commitments to you. If you want to see us, put a committee together and tell them to negotiate with us. But non-binding isn't going to get us any signal other than something that doesn't mean anything. I don't know, I'm trying to answer your question. We're, it's not about money. We won't be any further along after a non-binding election, except that we will have to come back here again and ask you to put a binding election on. And I will tell you from the passion of the folks behind, from my perspective, this is going to a binding election. Why do you want to have a non-binding election followed by a lengthy process of public hearings followed by a binding election? That doesn't give me a signal that you're prepared to have a meaningful dialogue. If you want to have a decision, let the community make a decision.
Thank you, John. Ryan, did you want to say something?
No.
Alex, is there anything that we've missed or anything we've, I've misspoken on that you need to correct, or?
I believe in words procedural discretion. Ben, I think you have accurately summarized the board's options here, and Stephanie, you think has laid out the practical implications of what will happen depending on how you decide to proceed. But ultimately, whether or not to reconsider your initial vote is entirely within the board's procedural discretion, in my opinion.
Thank you. Brian, from a procedural standpoint, if, from timing-wise, when realistically, if the board decides to reconsider and does, do a yes vote, gets the petition in, when are we likely looking at a special election? Timing-wise? Yes? Okay. So from the standpoint of your comments, John, that fits in with your timeline, right? Okay. Again, it's not about their timeline, it's about what's best for the town, but it's good to know sort of all of the things that are in front of us. Any other discussion on this in the board? I did say I didn't want to entertain questions from the audience, so I can't, I can't start because it's just gonna, it's not fair, and we're trying to be, trying to be fair here. What's our pleasure? I have the motions. If you want to reconsider, we can make a motion to not reconsider. It's the board's option. I just need a motion if we're ready to make a motion.
We have the motions.
These are the motions. October 27th, 13. Yes.
So is there no way to expedite this into a binding without causing people to go back? We need to go through this whole petition process here. I understand. Trying to, trying to figure out what, yeah. I really don't want everybody tearing each other apart for the last weeks of petitioning. Motion we make last time. Okay.
This is a motion. So if you're going to do the reconsideration, this is a motion. And assuming we all, it's just the majority, at least for our communities, so say if there's a majority vote here, then this is a still going to be a motion. And these are the petitions.
I get that, yeah, it's still, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make this motion. I move to reconsider the vote taken on October 27th to deny the location of a horse racetrack at the property located in the town of Harbick, known as Great Meadow Brook Farm, 228 Berry Road. More fully described in deeds and record at the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds at Book six-six-one-six-seven, page three-six-seven, pursuant to General Law, one-twenty-eight A, Section thirteen A.
Seconded the motion. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion before we call for a vote? I guess I will say this. I still sort of feel the way I feel, but it's becoming overwhelmingly clear to us, even though I've read and read all your wonderful comments about how you have faith in us and you elected us to do this job. We can't possibly filter or know everything that you all want to say, and we're not hearing from everybody. You know, the no vote brought this petition forward. However, these signatures ended up on the petition, they're here. And it's clear, probably even clearer for me now, that really the townspeople should vote on this. So it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote on this. I'm going to start left and go across. Rob?
Yes.
Julie is a yes. Kelly? No. Rob is a yes, Julie is a yes, Kelly is a no, so the motion carries to reconsider our vote. So remains everybody. So the motion that was mentioned last time, and I will read it. So I will entertain a motion to approve pursuant to General Law, Chapter one-twenty-eight A, Section thirteen A, the location of a horse racetrack at the property located in the town of Harvick known as Great Meadow Brook Farm, two twenty-eight Berry Road, more fully described in a deed recorded at the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds at Book six-six-one-six-seven, page three-six-seven. Set approval shall be subject to the following conditions. Execution of a host community agreement. Applicant obtains all necessary local permits and approvals, and agricultural land preservation committee determines that the project is consistent with the local APR.
I'll make the motion as Julie just read.
Is there a second? So the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? I will just say that I emphasize the conditions. The motion is, the approval is conditional or subject to these conditions. The host community agreement, obtaining all necessary permits and approvals, and agricultural land preservation committee determination. So these things need to be in place, the approval is conditional on her. Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, I will call a roll. Rob?
Yes.
Julie is yes. Kelly? No. Again, Rob is yes, Julie is yes, Kelly is no, so the motion carries. So what that means is we have just voted yes on this. And I can tell you, again, the three of us, I'm sure, have lost lots of sleep over this, as you have. There is no winning situation here. This situation is a little different than the landfill because the statute provided that the landfill discussion could go directly to the town and to a vote. We don't have that option under one-twenty, I never get this section right. One-twenty-eight A, Section thirteen A. So the vote that we have just taken is the only way to get it to you to vote. I can imagine that if there are four hundred and twenty people who signed the petition to have this reconsidered, there will be the appropriate number of voters to get the petition, to get this moving. So I think we're anticipating seeing that, and the process will continue to move forward. This is, you know, I sort of sitting up here with regard to, I'm thinking about the same thing as the USDA when we finally got the USDA funding back. And after a long process, I think we all wanted to celebrate, but honestly, it was just a feeling, it's been such a long process. I think the three of us are sort of sitting up here somber because we felt like this is the decision we needed to go with. Well, you saw the votes, and every one of us has a right to our own opinion. I respect everyone here, everyone in the audience with regard to your own opinions, but it just, it doesn't feel like a good yes vote, so I will just say that. You can take that for whatever it means. Any other business, anything we should be considering, Alex, with regard to this proposal or anything? Anything else from that group? Okay, so what you didn't hear is a motion to adjourn, and it was seconded. All those in favor of adjourning? Aye. The meeting is adjourned at seven fourteen. Please, a couple things, housekeeping, if you wouldn't mind helping with the chairs?
Thank you, Rick.
Also, please take coffee and cookies with you. They were kind enough to be brought here, so please take them with you.